At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our Travel Club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Show that all council members are in attendance and would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight I have a proclamation designating October 15th as dysautonomia month. Whereas dysautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of the autonomic nervous system, which is responsible for the automatic bodily functions such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. And whereas some forms of dysautonomia are considered rare diseases such as multiple system atrophy and pure autonomic failure, while other forms of dysautonomia are common, impacting millions of people in the United States and around the world, such as diabetic autonomic neuropathy, neurocardiogenic syncope, and postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome. And whereas dysautonomia impacts people of any age, gender, race, and background, including many individuals living in Council Plus, Iowa. And whereas some forms of dysautonomia can be disabling, and this disability can result in social isolation, stress on families of those impacted, and financial hardship. And whereas some forms of dysautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones. And whereas awareness of dysautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster support for individuals and families coping with dysautonomia in our community. And whereas Dysautonomia International, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of patients living with dysautonomia, encourages communities to celebrate Dysautonomia Awareness Month each October around the world. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Plus, Iowa, does hereby proclaim October 2015 as Dysautonomia Awareness Month in the City of Council Plus. And we seek to recognize the contributions of professional medical community, patients and family members, who are working to educate our citizens about dysautonomia. Therefore, I have set my hand unto this official document and attached the seal of the City of Council Plus this 28th day of September, the year 2015. Congratulations. If you want to say anything, you're welcome to. You don't have to.
I don't really have much to say. I have been affected by dysautonomia, and it's not a fun disease. It affects every aspect of your life, and you lose a lot more than you think you would. So, thank you.
And you also do not need to stick around, you're welcome to leave if you want, or you're welcome to stay if you want.
I have to go over to the University of Iowa in the morning for some appointments, so we have a long drive.
All right.
But thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great night and a good, safe drive.
Thanks.
The whole crowd.
You take everybody.
Probably the entire fan club.
Good to bring the family, I think.
Nice.
That's really nice.
That's very supportive.
That's awesome, yeah, that's what I mean.
It was very supportive.
All right, first picture.
Oh yeah, that's a good idea. Get a picture of everybody else.
All right. With that, we'll do the public hearings. This time, place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-255 authorizing the disposal of city property legally described as the east 60 feet of Lot 11, Babbitt Place. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the council on this matter?
Your hard go on or 20 West Oak, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for coming, though.
Anybody else? What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Just that I appreciate your willingness to take care of this property and get it back on the tax rolls and have it taken care of, so thank you.
One less lot for the city to mow.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-256 authorizing disposal of city property legally described as Lot 15, Block 3, Harriman Place. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council on this matter? Please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Frank Beavens, FP Investments. Address is 7706 South 101 Street. I put an offer in for this lot for $8,000. It was recommended that it be sold for $10,517. And I'd like to propose to the council that we split the difference of that $2,500, and I would be willing to pay $9,200 for the lot.
Does anyone have any questions?
Our intentions are to build a new construction home there within six months, put another home on the tax roll.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? What's the council's pleasure?
Well, it has been our, well, I suppose it is our new policy, our new standardized policy, that any buildable lot, which I believe is at least 40 feet wide and at least 100 feet deep, is not sold for surplus value, it's sold at market value. And we found that as a rule of thumb, we generally go with the assessor. Now, is that always exactly the market value? Of course not, but it is an objective metric, and that's what we've done for other folks. So I just don't feel like we can deviate from what we've been able to do for other people, though I appreciate your willingness. But I support selling it for what it's worth, so the taxpayer can get out of it the costs of having taken care of it.
I'll second that. Was that a motion?
No, actually, I'm sorry, I should have given a motion before I talked, shouldn't I? I'll move to approve.
Do you want to second?
I'll still second.
I believe he has another comment.
This is the first time that my wife and I has bought a lot through the city, and so I'm just kind of getting familiar with the process.
Sure.
But if that's your standard, we'd still be willing to pay the $10,517.
That's great.
I sure appreciate it, yeah. That's what we do for everybody.
Well, then I would want to be included with everybody else.
And it's a relatively new policy, and it's not intuitive, and welcome.
Thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
We'd like to sell you more in the future, so.
Yes, we would.
Well, it seems that, I'm happy to see that all the hours spent in inventorying city-owned property, which was an idea that came out of our council retreat five years ago, six years ago, seven years ago, we're seeing now the fruits of all those hours of work and that great idea, and I believe Sharon, it was your idea, or Nate's?
Oh, no.
You two shared that idea?
Oh, it was Sharon's.
On your top 10 list of priorities? And so I really appreciate it, there's two on tonight's agenda, I think there were a couple last time, so it seems to me that that's going to continue, and as I stated a few minutes ago, those are less lots that the city has to mow. So, thank you everyone for your interest.
Yeah, and I have been encouraging anybody in the neighborhood associations, if they have a property that abuts them, that they're interested in, please let us know, because it'll take time for the city to be able to work through all of the non-buildable lots and make those contacts, so.
And I certainly appreciate you coming in to share and make your offer, and understanding that the policy is what it is, because we also have an obligation to take care of the taxpayers in this community, and I appreciate the fact that you recognize that. And it establishes a kind of a fair standard that applies across the board, so it gives the community a good idea of what can be expected, not only from the city, but also for them as they extend these offers. So, again, I appreciate your willingness to meet us on that, and I look forward to seeing additional properties sold.
One last comment, just to encourage people, as soon as you go to the city website, you can see the pretty well-marked link to city-owned property, so I encourage people, if you're in the market, to buy some lots, or if there's an empty lot next door to you, go to the city website, find the property, and submit an offer.
Because the goal really is to get rid of these, you know, we do get a lot of complaints about the city lots, and could they be taken care of better? They certainly could. The amount it takes to do what the minimal that is done now is obscene, and if we were to make it immaculate, it comes out of your taxes. So there's a fine line there, and by getting rid of these to people that will make good use of them, they'll get back on the tax rolls. And your liability, you won't have a liability on them, and somebody will be mowing them at their cost. So please look into that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-257, approving the request for proposals for the Canesville Boulevard, US Highway 6, Traffic Adaptive Signal Control Project, fiscal year 15-20A. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, just what I mentioned a couple weeks ago, this is a more of a proactive versus a passive way of regulating the traffic flow, and the goal is to allow traffic to move smoothly and flow through all the lights on Canesville, thereby decreasing the traffic on the 100 block, which is, there's too much traffic on the 100 block, so hopefully this sign control project will reduce the traffic on the 100 block and let people move through the city quicker.
It is very nice to see the coordination with the Iowa Department of Transportation, so that the South Expressway system will be the same, so it'll be the same technology, so that we won't have incompatible parts or two different systems for people to learn. And in the past, I've talked about, you know, some cities have their lights flash red one direction and yellow the other, especially later in the evening or at night. We won't need to do that, because this system, as Councilmember Renigan said, real-time changes, it adapts, it learns what the traffic pattern is, so having to sit there at the light forever will go away.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-258, granting final plat approval for a one-lot minor subdivision to be known as Hawkeye Heights Subdivision Phase 2. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordinances on first reading, ordinance 6244, repealing ordinance number 5757, which approved the tax increment financing district for Barks Motel Urban Renewal Area and setting a public hearing for October 12, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Move the ordinance and set public hearing for October 12, 2015, 7:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6245, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning 7.80 acres, more or less, of land located on the north side of Greenview Road in the southeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 5-74-43, City of Council Plus, Potawatomi County, Iowa, more particularly described as commencing at the east quarter north of said Section 5, thence north 88 degrees, 28 minutes, 15 seconds west, and assumed bearing a distance of 313.61 feet along the south line of said southeast quarter of the northeast quarter, thence north 1 degree, 43 minutes, 41 seconds east, a distance of 53 feet to the point of beginning, thence north 88 degrees, 28 minutes, 15 seconds west, a distance of 817.90 feet, thence north 1 degree, 34 minutes east, a distance of 100 feet, thence south 88 degrees, 28 minutes, 15 seconds east, a distance of 421.64 feet, thence north 1 degree, 31 minutes, 45 seconds east, a distance of 652.53 feet, thence south 88 degrees, 28 minutes, 15 seconds east, a distance of 398.81 feet, thence south 1 degree, 43 minutes, 41 seconds west, a distance of 752.54 feet to the point of beginning from R3 Urban Residential District County to R1 Single Family Residential District City as defined in Chapter 15.08b, and setting a public hearing for October 12, 2015, 7:00 PM.
Everybody get that?
Don't ask us to draw it.
And Mr. Mayor gets to read it next week.
I'm looking forward to that.
Shat to me last time.
Motion to move the ordinance and set public hearing for October 12, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6246, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference by rezoning the properties legally described as Lots 6 through 10, Block 1, Hags First Edition from R3 Low-Density Multifamily Residential District to AP Administrative Professional District, and rezoning properties legally described as Lots 6, 9, and 10, Block 1, Hags First Edition from R3 Low-Density Multifamily Residential District to AP Administrative Professional District as defined in Chapter 15.13, and setting a public hearing for October 12, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there anyone here tonight that wanted to, we're setting public hearing, but was there anybody here that wanted to speak on that tonight, before we vote? Nope? Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6247, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning the property located at South 19th Street and Gifford Road and legally described as southwest quarter, northwest quarter, part of southeast quarter, northwest quarter, part of the southwest quarter, northeast quarter, along with part of government Lot 2 located in Section 14-74-44, from A2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District to I2 General Industrial District as defined in Chapter 15.21, and setting a public hearing for October 12, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Move the ordinance to second reading and set public hearing for 7:00, 7:00 PM, October 12, 2015.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6248, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning the properties located at 2425, 2427, and 2429 Avenue A, being lots 11, 12, and 13, Block 37, Central Subdivision from R3 Low-Density Multifamily Residential to C2 Commercial as defined in Chapter 15.15, and setting a public hearing for October 12, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Motion to move the ordinance to second hearing and set public hearing for October 12, 2015.
Second.
Discussion.
When we considered the West Broadway Corridor Plan, I heard some concerns regarding zoning decisions, that the plan would necessitate up and down the length of the corridor. And looking at the progress of how this particular zoning action was taken, I'm actually quite impressed by how this was handled by the business community and how well it was received by the owners of the property affected. They felt as though they had been treated fairly and with dignity, and I'm certainly glad to everybody for that. And I hope as the city moves forward, that we take steps to provide updates to neighbors up and down the corridor, so we can provide them with a little bit of information as to what could be happening in the immediate vicinity, and help allay any potential concerns that they might have. But we're definitely off to a good start here with this particular project, and I congratulate the business acumen of everybody involved in it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6249, amending Chapter 2, Title 2, Revenue and Finance by creating a new Chapter 2.30 entitled Operating a Perpetual Care Cemetery.
Motion to approve the document that we were given today, is that correct?
The amended ordinance.
I believe it would be. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
It corrects the title, it's not sales tax with the cemetery, that's an interesting thought, but it's revenue and finance. You happen to own Fairview Cemetery, it was gifted to you in a way.
And this is kind of a standard procedure used throughout the state for private as well as publicly-owned cemeteries, and this helps to improve the upkeep and maintenance of those types of memorial properties. So it benefits all the citizens, and it helps keep good memories, if you will, and so this is, the intent is to help improve the maintenance and upkeep of the public cemetery land.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution 15-259, repealing the Barks Motel Urban Renewal Plan and Area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-260, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Commonwealth Electric Company for the Midwest, of the Midwest, for the I-80 Pump Station Control Panel Replacement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-261, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an Iowa Department of Transportation addendum to Agreement Number U-2015-16952 in connection with the I-80 and I-29 Interstate Improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to note that the city is receiving a grant, excuse me, a grant by the Iowa DOT.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-262, granting preliminary subdivision plan approval of a six-lot industrial subdivision to be known as South Point Subdivision Phase 2.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-263, authorizing the purchase of structural firefighting personnel protective equipment for the Councilless Fire Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-264, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with MFT Construction Incorporated for the Rivers Edge Subdivision Improvement Project Phase 2.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Only to say that I've stated my concerns about the costs of this project, and I won't repeat those concerns tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, we learned this afternoon that about 48% of the cost of this project will be paid via a RISE grant, and that is 100% free money to the city. And I also have a note here that the bid, most bids recently have been coming in above engineer's estimate, this one actually was slightly under, about 3% under, but every little bit helps.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
Resolution 15-265, approving the street finance report ending June 30, 2015.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, 8A, B, and C.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to address the council? Anyone from the council? What's that?
Can you talk about the primary, is that okay? Just to remind people.
Yes.
What about the primary?
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Shayla Richardson. First of all, I wanted to thank you guys for your time. I've talked to each and every one of you, and I appreciate your time, I know you're busy. I'm here because we are trying to amend the current pit bull law, as it is. On July 20th, our family joined the many families that have had to say goodbye to their family pets. Our dog Stitch was born a pit bull mix, and sadly because of this, we were given seven days to find her a new home, and we are and were heartbroken. Anyone who has ever met her can attest to her loving character, she is a fun and loyal gentle dog. Five years ago, she captured my heart, when on the very day that I met her, I had just received some very sad news, and as I sat on the couch crying, she simply walked over and put her head softly in my lap and was comforting me without even knowing me. It is now our turn, I feel, to step forward to be the hearts, hands, and voices of the dogs that have had to endure similar circumstances, unable to return home. We are asking for an alternative and sensible, safe solution to amend our current ban. At this time, we would like to see responsible owners carry $100,000 liability insurance, provide secured fencing, muzzle dogs, microchipped, spayed and neutered, as well as take a temperament test. This would mirror Omaha's current regulations that they have, and as far as I know, that is working for them. Omaha also has their pit bulls pass a K-9 Good Citizen Class, and I think that that would be something that could be possibility as well. So far, 19 states have lifted their bans, and I'm hoping that Iowa will someday be one. I know it's a long road, it has been so far. Carter Lake is in the process of lifting theirs, they have passed two of three considerations, and this whole process has taken them a whole year and a half to do, so I know it's going to be a long road. In closing, I would like to say that as In closing, I would like to say that as a teacher, a schoolteacher, and a Christian, I do not want to see anybody hurt. I don't, okay? But I feel like these stipulations would ensure a safer, safe community while being fair to responsible owners and giving them a chance. So far, we have gathered 705 signatures of people who support our cause. We will continue to gather more because we believe that breed identification gives limited insight to their actual behavior characteristics. So, we would like a safe and fair amendment for responsible owners, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I wanted to thank you. We did talk on the phone.
We did, yes.
And it's nice to put a face with a name.
That's right. Thank you.
And I want to thank you, even though you and I disagree on this issue.
Exactly.
It's been very respectful, and the way you've gone about it is exactly the way people need to do it. I'm very impressed with residents who advocate on behalf of a cause. Reminds me of things in the past myself.
I remember what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I really would love to see more of that, even especially when it's not something I agree with, because I think you get those ideas out there, you get the best result, and you get an engaged community. And so, it may sound odd for me, but keep up the good work at how you're doing it, even though I respectfully disagree with your position.
I appreciate that so much. I really do. Thank you.
Do you have copies of all these petition signatures?
I do. I made copies of all of them.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to hand them.
If you could leave them with the city clerk, I'd appreciate it.
Afterwards?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Patricia Fuller, 26 Pickard Lane, Council Bluffs. I also would like to express my opposition to the ban on pit bulls in Council Bluffs. I do have a couple of handouts I would like you to look at now if I can pass those around.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Yeah, you're first. Can I get a motion to receive?
We've gone back in time. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you can question, and I'd like to see if you can identify the pit bull. And this one is from Shayla's podcast that the graphic community has done, and this has featured a nationally geographic graphic ad that shows how innovative they've been with their ordinance.
Anyway, I'm a retired nurse, and I'm certainly concerned about safety. I think we all want our communities to be safe for both people and pets, but we also want our communities to be protected against any dangerous dog. But we also want abused dogs to be protected from reckless owners. Breed discriminatory legislation does not contribute to that goal. Research has found that these laws do not reduce the number of dog bites or improve public safety. When we hear the term pit bull, I think we all think, oh, boy, dangerous. Breed discriminatory laws perpetuate that stigma. Any law that is based on discrimination, whether it's against a certain race or religion, is based on fear and perpetuating that fear. I think we need more research. We need more actual statistics. When I wrote a city council member, his response was there had been a significant drop in injuries to children, and I'm wondering where these statistics are. We went to the Public Health Department, and the statistics they gave us was the year that it was banned, in 2005, there were 115 total bites. The following year, 2006, was 138. But what they found was the average pretty much stayed about the same before and after the ban, about 94 per year, and this is covering all bites, and this has been pretty consistent throughout the nation. That year, 2005, had 17.4% of the bites were Labrador Retrievers, and pit bull was 10.4%. I think these are some of the reasons why 19 states, the American Bar Association, the American Veterinary Association, and the Animal Rescue Association, none of these organizations support breed discrimination. Instead, they support laws that go after the real problem, the behavior of the individual dog, and the reckless owner. The best safety-focused laws do the following. They demand that all dog owners restrain or restrict their dogs, and this is regardless of breed or whether they've had a history of biting when the dogs are off their property. They require all nuisance dogs to be microchipped and sterilized, and they prohibit reckless owners from owning dogs for a specified period of time. An example close to home is the one that I gave you with the Nebraska Humane Society. They've combined innovative thinking, pet behavioral science, and smart marketing. By this, the Nebraska Humane Society has managed to reverse what could have been a serious ban on pit bulls and other so-called bully breeds. Since launching the initiative in compliance with the city's breed-specific ordinance in 2009, the shelter has facilitated hundreds of adoptions and proven that these dogs can be exceptional companions. Along with very strict restrictions, the centerpiece of the program is the Breed Ambassador Training. All bully breeds are eligible for free obedience classes over six weeks. That enables them to take the K-9 Good Citizen Test developed by the American Kennel Club. Dogs that pass this are issued a Breed Ambassador Vest, which is shown in that little thing, and can go out without a muzzle and become community ambassadors, thus helping to dispel a lot of their undeserved stigma. And I do thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Susan Youngman. I live at 14 Lanesan Avenue. And all of you received this packet from me. Did you get it read? It was pretty large, but I did a lot of work on that. I'm also here to oppose the CB ban on breed-specific dogs. I also want to talk about safety issues. I'm a retired nurse, and I'm very concerned about safety, as is Pat. From the Annual American Veterinary Medical Association, July 11 to 14, 2009 in Seattle, Washington, they made this statement. There has never been any evidence that breed bans or restrictions contribute to improve public safety. Also, the Netherlands repealed its breed ban last year because, based on a report from a committee of experts, the ban had not led to any decrease in dog bites. Italy also repealed their breed ban this year, and as the other mentioned, 19 states have lifted their bans. It's a time for change. In 2012, the American Veterinary Medical Association published a report stating there is no evidence from which to conclude that one kind of dog should be considered disproportionately dangerous. The report also stated that has not shown that breed-specific legislation has ever reduced the rate or severity of dog bite-related injuries anywhere. The American Bar Association, House of Delegates, passed a resolution in 2012 urging all towns and countries, counties in the United States, to repeal any breed-specific laws still in effect. The analysis supporting the resolution highlighted the many problems of breed-specific legislation, significant questions of due process, waste of government resources, failure to produce safer communities, inability to reliably identify dogs to be regulated or seized, and infringement on property rights. Consistent with the American Bar Association recommendation, Massachusetts, Nevada, Connecticut, Rhode Island have recently enacted laws that preempt towns and counties from regulating dogs on the basis of breed. From January 2012 till May of 2013, more than three times as many jurisdictions either rejected proposed breed-specific legislation or repealed an ordinance previously in effect as enacted breed-specific legislation of any kind. The message of this trend is clear. Improved community safety results when you hold dog owners responsible for humane care, custody, and control of their dogs, regardless of the dog's presumed actual breed. And from the American Society of Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, breed-specific laws have a tendency to compromise rather than embrace public safety. When limited animal control resources are used to regulate or ban a certain breed of dog without regard to behavior, the focus is shifted away from routine effective enforcement of laws that have the best chance of making our communities safer, such as dog license laws, leash laws, animal fighting laws, anti-tethering laws, laws facilitating spaying and neutering, and laws that control all owners to control their dogs regardless of breeds. Breed-specific laws may actually encourage ownership by irresponsible people, and I found this interesting. If you outlaw a breed, then outlaws are attracted to that breed. Unfortunately, some people take advantage of the outlaw status of their breed of choice to bolster their own self-image as living outside of the roles of mainstream society. Ironically, the rise of the pit bull ownership among gang members in the late 1980s coincided with the first breed-specific legislation. The facts, 86.6 of the American pit bull terriers have passed their temperament tests, according to the American Temperament Test Society, better than collies, golden retrievers, and beagles, ranking pit bulls fourth in highest passing grades of the 122 breeds tested. I urge you to consider lifting the ban.
Thank you.
Hi, Charlotte Skoken, 34, 10 Fifth Ave. I'll be very brief. I was here before a couple of you in 2004, a few pounds heavier and more gray hair, but I'm still standing for the same thing. I've had these dogs for 27 years. I've never had a problem. For the last 10 years, mine were grandfathered in. I live a block from a school. We've never had problems. Children, my family, my friends, nobody's been bitten, maimed, injured whatsoever. I did reach out to some area veterinarians who I feel are the experts in this field. Just because I've had them for 27 years doesn't make me an expert. It makes me familiar, but unfortunately, snail mail didn't get me as many responses as I wanted. I did reach one veterinarian by email, and I'll just read his letter, and I'll let you folks just listen to that. I won't bore you with any more. This is from Dr. Mark Peters, who's been an area veterinarian in Council Bluffs for many years, and the letter solicited just their feedback on the temperament and their assessment of the situation. And they were given a copy of the Council Bluffs ordinance and the Omaha ordinance. He writes, Dear Charlotte, this letter is in response to your email of September 16, and you have my permission to present it to the city council on September 28. I have felt for many years that the laws in Council Bluffs pertaining to pit bulls are unreasonably harsh. In 33 years of practice, I have treated hundreds of pit bulls and encountered in them very few temperament problems. I support changing the current Council Bluffs ordinance to the one similar or identical to that which applies to the city of Omaha. The Nebraska Humane Society is an extremely circumspect organization, and if it's good enough for them, I'm certain it will serve the health and welfare of the citizens of Council Bluffs just as well. Respectfully, Mark E. Peters, DVM.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Alfonso Robinson. I'm a loan executive with the United Way of the Midlands. It's at 2201 Farnham Street in Omaha, Nebraska, and I could offer the council some materials here.
Is there a motion?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to start off by saying thank you to the council. This leadership here sets the example for your employees. It sets the example for the community, and we know through the history of giving to the United Way of the Midlands that even members of this very body here and members of the employees of the City of Council Bluffs have given to the United Way. Many wonderful things have been able to happen that have helped and benefited the people of this community, as well as throughout and across the Midlands here. One of the things that I've offered you is the 2015-2016 funding, which talks about the three main core areas that the United Way is funding in, which is basic needs, classroom-ready, and workforce-ready. And we know that those are things that help to bring about the vitality of a community, to make the individuals in that community more healthy. It brings them back on the tax rolls if they're better employees, they're able to find good jobs, paying jobs, and if they're able to meet the needs and the well-being of their families. And so, I appreciate the fact that when we're talking about mission and things of that nature, that we seem to be on the same page in respect to that. The giving of the members of this body, the city of employee, the city of Council Bluffs employees, as well as other people that have been given through the United Way, I just want to point out some of the organizations that serve here and are even housed here. For example, the Sarpy Hardship Assistance Center through the Heartland Family Services, Material Assistance and Seasonal Services, Council Bluffs, through Salvation Army Nebraska, Congregate Meals, Council Bluffs Senior Citizen, Council Bluffs Meals on Wheels, Connection Area Agency on Aging Incorporated, the MICA House, might be another organization that you're familiar with. Those are just some of the organizations that benefit from the funds of the United Way, and in turn, they give back to the people of this community. Why am I here tonight? To thank you. I'm here to thank you because this work can't be done without your support. And when you give, sometimes people don't always take the time to turn around and say, hey, thank you. So I'm taking the time tonight to come here before you, before we start the campaign with the employees, to say, I thank you. I thank the employees of the City of Council Bluffs. I thank this community for being a community that is one which is about giving, and to say that as we move forward in this campaign, we hope to continue to do many more things in the name of Council Bluffs and for the benefit of the people of this community. I've shared some of these things with you, and as leaders, one of the things you might find interesting is our Bridge Builders Society, which is for those people who, if they're able to give at higher levels of giving, they are, and we have many people across the Midlands that have given. And be mindful of the fact that the dollars that are given here in the Midlands, it stays here. It doesn't go floating all over the world. It stays right here. And so, the people that you see in this room, the people that are outside these walls, the ones that call us for help, if they call that 211 number looking for services, those are the ones who are going to benefit for the dollars that are given through the United Way. So, I'm just going to end it now and open myself up for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council?
I just wanted to make sure everyone watching and everyone here remembers that Tuesday, we do have a primary to vote for city council, and so just please get out and vote on Tuesday. It's coming up very quickly for the primary. Your vote really does count and make a difference, and I hope everybody takes a few minutes to exercise where to vote. If you need to find out where you vote, there's a website online that you can look it up. It's on the Secretary of State website. You can enter your address, and it's really simple.
And I'd like to say thank you, ladies, for coming in to make your case this evening. That was some outstanding advocacy, and it's quite impressive that you've collected so many petition signatures, so I hope people are paying attention to this, and we give this careful consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else? With that, we're adjourned.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity-safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. September 27, Papa Roach and headliner Five-Fear Death Punch rock Council Bluffs. Then rock opera takes the stage with the return of TSO, November 18. Over at the convention center, over 200 exhibitors are on hand at the Callahan Craft Show. And October 18, vendors aspire to inspire at the Wedding Essentials Show, and October eighteenth, vendors aspire to inspire at the Wedding Essentials Idea Show. Remember, the MAC offers free parking for all events. Tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.